Hello, I'm Lawrence Cedarstrom and I'm the host of the All Around Grant Show. Some of what we've covered on the show, the Great Grant Tractor Parade and the GRP float that has also been in several other parades, as well as some of the greenhouses in Grant, the apple orchards, some of the farm markets in Grant, pick your own blueberry fields which we have close, some of the farms that are around, car shows that we frequent, as well as the cutter parades, and so much more. So join me.
Hello, welcome to the All Around Grant Show and tonight I have my co-host with me, Diana Longory. Thank you Diana for helping us.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here.
All right. Well, now what I want to start off with is the citizens of Grant voted me to retire from being a city council person. And I wanted to show one of the things behind it because I had a lot of support. We got an email list from the Monomedi- Medei Youth Hockey Association. The minutes are, "We are scheduled to appear before the Grand Planning Commission and it's been moved to 12/18. The vote is scheduled in January. Grant Mayor continues to support our rink request. Of the five council members, three are in favor of the rink, two are not. The two of the council members are willing to put signs. Anyone who lives in Grant, please go out and vote and spread the word." They actually were going door-to-door soliciting support for this hockey arena which is being built on a commercial waste site which there's a restrictive covenant that says nothing can be built there. It's going to be $14 million. Of course, they're a long way in raising the money for it. They've already got $37,000. So basically, I was unelected because I didn't support putting a youth hockey arena for $14 million on a school site. Okay.
And it's a dump site, a former dump site.
It's a former dump site and there's a restrictive covenant that says nothing can be built there.
Right. And I think the important point, Mr. Cedarstrom, to make is that certainly you're not against hockey and you're not against youth sports. You were a teacher by trade. I mean, that was your profession. I mean, you would not be thumbing your nose at sports and things to keep the kids engaged. What you were objecting to was putting an ice arena on a former dump site that has covenants on the land that says that you can't really do that because there is a health hazard there. And so, that's why you were in objection to it. And of course, the folks who wanted to see it a different way, you know, health issues out the window. Who cares?
Well, what was interesting is the environmental assessment worksheet had all these restrictive things and problems that they had to take care of for the workers who were putting it in. To hell with the kids when they're playing on it, you know? So I guess that is kind of an interesting thing that's coming about. And again, we're going to be talking this at the end. There's a current lawsuit that was sent up to the Supreme Court and is going back. It's called Cruz-Guzman versus State of Minnesota. And what is going forward, they're going to divide the metropolitan area up into seven segments to eliminate the white flight and increase desegregation. Because the inner city, they're having trouble with achievement, you know, with the students of color. And so, all the white kids go out to the suburbs, you know, like Monomedi has a 33% open enrollment. Well, now what they're trying to do is correct that. They've had a couple lawsuits before, over like '93 and 2004 or whatever. Excuse me. And so, this is coming to a head. We're now going to have Keith Ellison coming in as Attorney General and it's significantly possible that he would sign off on this. But that's, we'll talk about Cruz-Guzman at the end of the show.
So, one thing first, Lauren, before we move on to your clips, is that I'm wondering, you were talking about this email that you said that you received, that you have a copy of there. Now, whose server was that email on? Was that on a school district server? What type of email was used in sending around this email? Is it a private email or is it a school district email?
It's private. It's the Monomedi Youth Hockey Association. They've been lobbying to put this arena in. Now, they have to spend an extra $2 million to take the 30-foot of waste away from there. And they're disregarding, of course, the restrictive covenant. Now, we got this from going on to the email. And the other email that was added to this, "Why we have trouble winning elections." Dash. A third party who controls their elections without input or debate does not even have to file campaign financial reports. So they're putting all this money into getting this hockey arena and they're hell-bent for election. It's interesting because the Adonis Heights Hockey Arena, you know, went belly-up and Ramsey County had to take it over.
Right.
So, there's a lot of slop in this. So, but anyway, we're going to now switch to the next one. We're going to talk about, you know, between the truth and taxation and the meeting, excuse me. Mayor Huber went out and talked to the attorney for at least 15, 20 minutes. And so, when it came back and then we're supposed to be approving the solar garden, that was the tax amendment. Well, he came in, the attorney came in and made a big stink about, "We can't do this, we can't do that." So, we'll play this clip and we'll talk on the other side.
He took exception to the identification of some litigation that the city had been involved with. He made the point that he thought that the litigation should be identified by its full caption rather than the way I identified it, which I identified it as Doe versus Lanu at all. Mr. Smith's point was that, well, we should identify all the parties. And so, I don't necessarily disagree with his characterization of that. And so, I told him that I'd make an announcement at this meeting and I said that I would announce, well, I don't know that I said this, but I would announce the full caption of the litigation, which was Points versus Larry Lanu and City of Grant. City of Grant was sued on a theory of vicarious liability as a result of claimed conduct by Councilmember Lanu. And I think perhaps we've heard the last of that tonight. But I wanted to make that identification of that issue that Mr. Smith, John Smith, I believe, raised with me offline. Thank you.
Well, I was wrong on that. That is about the Kim Points lawsuit versus Larry Lanu in the City of, during the whole time that they were pushing this forward, they didn't name that the clerk was suing the city. So, that's what got out there. And...
And generally speaking, when you have a lawsuit that has a John Doe or a Jane Doe in the caption, it might be because of a couple different reasons. One, because maybe you have an unnamed party that you are still doing discovery and you're trying to identify who some of these unnamed individuals might be, who will then be added in later. Or it could be that there's confidential reasons for keeping somebody's name confidential. But generally, if that's the case, like say, for instance, it's a juvenile, they use initials and that they don't say Jane Doe, they use initials. And so, there's this idea that they were using the name Jane Doe as the alias for Kim Point's name. There's, I can see no reason for that because it's public knowledge. You could go down to the courthouse, you could pull up that case. It's not a sealed case. It's not, like I said, not confidential. And anybody from the public would be able to go and look at that file and easily see who it is. But it looks to me more like it was a way to shroud what the city council majority was really doing, which was trying to get an extra payoff for the city clerk to be a supporter of theirs. And that quite frankly is what happened. To the tune of what? $50,000?
Yes, $50,000. Okay, backing up, I was to all four meetings and they voted to negotiate up to $50,000. At no point in the closed session did they vote to give her $50,000. At no time, legally, they were required to vote in public on $50,000. The reason of the Jane Doe was, they then could put it on Larry Lanu and affect the election. It was all geared towards election. As some of these other things we're going to see, she was paid on the 16th of July, the 50 grand. Then, against the advice of the League of Minnesota Citizens, which is the insuring unit, they said, "Well, we're not going to participate. If you want to give her $50,000, you're not getting reimbursed from us." Then after that was settled, they went to the attorney and said, "Well, you've already got $50,000. If you make this go away against Larry Lanu because we have to take care of him, you can have another $25,000." So, her attorney got $12,500, she got $12,500. So, she ended up with $62,500, which is basically, she makes 66 a year. So, she got an extra year's salary out of it. And a lot of this was done for the election. They wanted to have it done before the election. Unfortunately, it didn't happen. But then they got the hockey people to get engaged to get both of us out. Now, there will be no adverse or opposite views shown. I realize it's the will of the majority, but it also has to be the voice of the minority. And they have two more yes people in there. So, they're going to have Secondhand Danny, Secondhand Raj and Secondhand Kiefer. There will be little or no discussion. Those meetings are going to go through so quick that whatever the mayor wants, he basically, we're going to talk about this a little bit later, about how they engineered to get around things and how they changed policies and procedures before we came in and passed some major ordinances to circumvent us allowing to participate.
And that was four years ago. And of course, now they've completed their plan is that they've now, through the election process and the rigging behind the scenes that they've done to create bad press, I mean, that's really what they've done, is created bad press to affect the election. Well, now they've got their, they'll have their way in absolutely everything.
Oh, absolutely. So, that, it's really interesting. So, you know, they passed the policies and procedures in November 2014. They also passed another ordinance that allows different types of venues, for example, like wedding barns and supper clubs. And they did that right before we got in. And we're going to come back to this. But now, we're going to talk about something else. We have a road in Grant called Keats and it goes from County Road 12 down to Hools. Now, there's a portion of that that goes through this swampy area like a big pond that has never been assigned to the city. Now, they got the brilliant idea. Of course, the mayor doesn't direct anything. He tells the engineer and the engineer, the engineer and the planner and the attorney to go do whatever and we'll, you know, we'll support you, you know? So, they put, they had, because of the flooding last year, Larry Lanu helped another contractor and put a pump in to reduce the flooding when they in fact did nothing. We worked with Valley Branch to get it taken care of. Then they decided, Larry got them to work with Fran Myron in the county to raise the road two feet so it wouldn't flood. Then they come up with a brilliant idea, "Now, we have to put a guard rail up." Well, they put the east guard rail up, which was not a problem. But then they're coming to put the west guard rail up and they came with this paperwork for this guy to sign. And he said, "Wait a minute. You want to take eight feet of my property to fill in and put a guard rail? I'm not signing that." Well, it's very interesting. One of the last meetings, I asked about that. "Oh, no, it's all on track. It's ready to go." Well, I happen to have talked to the attorney extensively that's representing him. And you can't just take land without eminent domain or some type of agreement that allows...
Right. Because it's not the city's or the county's right-of-way. In other words, they've used all their right-of-way for the road, right?
Well, they were never given right-of-way. They just got it through use, you know?
Oh, I see. So, the road actually is actually just because of custom and usage.
Mm-hmm.
I see. And so, there's not even a claim to say, "Oh, the right-of-way must be there somewhere." There's not even a claim to that.
Well, all they have is the road. All they have is the road because it's been in use for 25 years or 30 years.
Wow. And so, they just thought the guy was just going to sign off his land just like that.
Oh, absolutely. And that's what this next clip is about, is about the Keats railing. So, if we could play that?
What I was curious, I would like to talk to the engineer tonight to see how the guard rail along Keats is coming. We haven't heard anything on that. It was, and it's getting close to winter and, you know, it's harder to drill those posts in when it's ground's frozen. So, it would be nice to, you know, try to get the thing going to keep our costs low.
When did you first think of this? Just tonight or?
Well, I assumed that the engineer was going to be here so I could ask him, you know?
I would encourage you in the future, and every council member, all of us, you know what? Whether it's the minutes, whether it's consent agenda items, whether it's questions for staff, feel free to go ahead and send those to the clerk beforehand. Because then, whether or not the engineer was here or not, you would have gotten an update because there was nothing on there. The clerk would have read an update from the engineer. So, if we're communicating through the city office, we'd have gotten it done. Ms. Points?
Mayor...
Frequently.
Well, thanks. I wish you would have done it in this instance. Yeah.
Mayor, council members, it's my understanding, Councilmember Cedarstrom, that project is still moving forward. We're still on the schedule in terms of the timing when it was going to be done and it will be done.
Well, I would just thank you for the update. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Thanks for pointing that out. Larry?
Well, that's really funny because, you know, they say, "Oh, you got to put it on the agenda, put it on this." Well, it takes a vote of three, okay? You put something on there, they don't put it on the agenda. It isn't even up for discussion. So, once again, he's blowing smoke. He's a pathological liar.
And one thing I want to point out, Mr. Cedarstrom, is that this is a project that is an ongoing project of the city. And it is a project that has legal issues tied to it. So, the fact that you wanted to ask that question at the meeting, you shouldn't have had to prep the city attorney or the city clerk that you were going to have a question about the update on this particular project. Because first of all, your city attorney should know where it's at legally. Because obviously, the other party has an attorney. They must be communicating. So, your attorney for the city should know very well where that project is with regard to the legal issues. The city clerk, on the other hand, she is the liaison and the go-between with the engineer who is just a contract employee. And so, she is the one that is supposed to be the point person. And as that point person, she should know what the status is of all pending jobs in the very small, little city of Grant. I mean, after all, it's only a few miles across, correct?
Correct. Well, the interesting thing is too, I've had conversations with the gentleman that owns the land more than once. I've had a conversation with his attorney that I also am using on another case. And they basically brought the papers out, told the guy to sign them, and he said, "No," and they won't bring them back. The attorney at one of the meetings and then to go, "Oh, we got it all taken care of. It's under control." Well, I'm here to tell you, if they go ahead and slam that in without getting permission, there's going to be legal repercussions. So, that's how that's going. Now, what we're going to show you is what happened at Valley Branch, which is the watershed district that this thing is in, where all the flooding occurred, where we went and had it pumped out, et cetera, et cetera. And here's Larry Lanu talking at Valley Branch. So, if we could play the next clip, we'll talk on the other side.
And your pumping is correct. It did work. I installed the pumps. And I want to thank Commissioner Fran Myron. He also met with me down there. And we found some millings to raise both Keats and Jocelyn Road over there. Very helpful for the emergency response vehicles and school buses and the daily traffic that goes on through there. I want to thank Mr. Myron for his work on that. One of the concerns I have is that we have a city council that doesn't seem to work with the watershed nearly as well as our county commissioners do. Now, some of you are aware of the pond across from Keats Avenue. There's a berm there already. Our city went in there and dug into that berm and opened that up, which allowed more water to get into the Keats Pond. I think it was great. The homeowner Simpson has backfilled and filled that pond in. I don't think that opening of that berm was done through the permitting through the Valley Branch Watershed. Currently, we just put in a guard rail. It just got installed probably last week. And he just drove down there on Keats. You see the guard rail's pretty much out into the road. There is no shoulder for that to be put on. On the west side of that road, you are, they're going to be permitted and you're asking to fill in wetlands on the west side of that property. When I came to this meeting, when Mr. Dave Busick was there, he indicated that the Keats Avenue Road is not even owned by the City of Grant. That is actually on private property. That means that the watershed is well aware of it. The City of Grant may be well aware of it. And right now, they want to get a permit from you right now to fill the bank on the west side. I would ask that this body withhold and give the homeowner that owns that property the opportunity to file a data request from both the county, the watershed, and the City of Grant to find out where is the established property line? When was it established? Can you fill an encroach on his property? Is he right to get paid? And has there been any finding of facts? Has anybody established, we can establish a center of the road, but they haven't established for that homeowner the actual property lines. So, before this body issue any permits to allow that filling on the west side of the road, I'd ask that he be given the opportunity to file a data request form from these three bodies and get the information so he can assess it, turn it over to his attorney for review before the watershed simply issues them a permit and they are involved in more litigation than they need to be.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Is there any...
Oh, right. So, they're going forward and they've been informed that the legal process hasn't been completed and they should withhold the process, the permit from that.
And just to be clear, it's the City of Grant that's applying for the permit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, in that permit, they're claiming that they own the land that is going to be filled?
Well, they're claiming that they have it taken care of. And when in fact, I know they haven't because I talked to the property owner and I talked to the property owner's attorney.
Right. But that's what I'm saying is that on their permit, they're representing that they have the right to do the filling, correct?
Well, I don't even know if they filled the permit out yet.
I see. Okay.
They may not be filling a permit out because they didn't put a permit out for other things, you know? The only reason that the flooding got taken care of was because Valley Branch authorized a contractor to do it and allowed the Indian Hills Golf Club to run the 1,000-foot tube or hose to put it into their, they have like a gravelled pond, you know?
Sure, yeah.
That absorbs, whereas the other part of the, where the flooding is silt, loam, and clay and it doesn't sink in. But you pump it 1,000 feet east and it's a clay area and it goes right down through. So, that's what's happening there. And we're going to be interesting to see what happens. There's a lot of, there's always a slip between the cup and the lip. I am just in shock how illegally, how they do not follow ordinance and statute. They just go ahead and do things. It is just, it blows my mind just totally.
But, Mr. Cedarstrom, they can do that, right? They're in power, right?
That's right.
Isn't that what the rule of the land is? You're in power. You can pretty much do what you want. You got your votes lined up. What else is there to do?
And nobody can probably bring you to task. And we've shown things, a number of things. As a matter of fact, that initial 2014 violation of open meeting, when Hoffman rolled over on his own order. I mean, this is crazy. But that's the way it is. It's going to be interesting too, what's going to happen with this. The next big issue we have is the solar garden.
Ah. Now, of course, you would think that a solar garden out in a rural area would be a non-controversial item on the agenda. So, non-controversial, it might even be on a consent agenda, correct?
That's right. But the lady that owns the land didn't support Carr and Huber for election. They've taken everything away from her. They kicked 4-H and she taught 4-H for 50 years. She was, they took her out of there. They kicked 4-H out of the city council, the old Wheelander School. They took the ball field away from her. They tried to take the fire marshal. But the fire marshal is...
And that was a position, correct?
Position. And she, that's provided by the DNR and the DNR said, "Sorry, buddy. She's a fire marshal." And the crony they put up there didn't take a lot of calls and finally, he retired. Well, he didn't do anything anyway. If you're not doing anything, I don't know how you can retire. But that was toughy. He's another one of the snakes they have. But it's really interesting because they were going to, she has 60-some acres and it was going to be in a corner. And it's already trees on one side. There were going to be trees on three sides. And there was going to be, out of the 10, 12 acres, there was going to be four or five acres of solar panels. And the rest was going to be a pollinator garden. And if you're familiar with the current crisis we have with pollinators on the decline, we need to prop it up because if we don't have bees, we don't have food. But what interestingly happened was between the truth and taxation meeting at 7 o'clock that, or 6 o'clock was over at 6:15, Huber was out there talking for 15 or 20 minutes to the attorney. So, they cooked up the brilliant idea to table the solar garden because Larry and I would have had discussion in favor of it. And of course, they want to move it to January. Well, there'll be no discussion and they'll just have five no votes. So, that's what this is about. The slimy attorney pushing things through to put it off for next year. So, if we could play that clip, we'll talk on the other side.
...the last couple of days. But I believe on Thursday, I received a five-page, count them, five-page letter from Bruce Bedwell, who indicates that he's the general counsel for United States Solar Corporation. And Mr. Bedwell's letter that I received on Thursday last week identifies the fact that U.S. Solar made an application on or about October 11th of this year. And that's the application that's before us tonight. But he submits a five-page letter. It contains additional information that I haven't had an opportunity to evaluate in detail. And I spoke with the planner, Ms. Haskamp, about it. I don't think she's had an opportunity to evaluate it at any level of detail. And my suggestion and request to Ms. Haskamp was that the application be tabled and that the review period be extended by up to 60 days to give us time to understand what Mr. Bedwell is saying. Is Mr. Bedwell present here today? He's not present.
No, I'm representing U.S. Solar.
Okay. And your name?
I'm Mr. Bedwell, my name's Slimeball.
Okay. Okay. Because there's another number of propositions in the letter and other things that I think staff needs to opine on. And so, my request to council, it'll be your decision, is that the matter be tabled. I note also that there are some...
All right. There's a slimeball in action.
Well, now, this is very fascinating that they have pulled this out at this point. Because first of all, there is a Minnesota state law...
60 days.
That's the 60-day rule. Now, there actually have been incidences where in Maplewood that that 60 days has been missed. And technically speaking, is that when a city misses the 60-day rule and doesn't take action or doesn't do an extension, then the request is deemed approved. And that was put into law to keep municipalities from delaying an application for months and months and months and months. So that that way, there is actually deadlines in place. And so, my question in watching this to you is, did the council get a copy of this five-page letter received by the city from that attorney?
No, we didn't. However, if the attorney got it on Thursday, the meeting's on Tuesday night, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, you'd think in four days, they'd have a chance to read a four, five-page letter. But again, this is just a sham. They want to make sure to table this so they can go to the January meeting and then they can get five no votes. There'll be, this way, there will not foster any discussion at all. There'll be nothing brought up. It'll just be slam bam, thank you ma'am. And that's exactly what they're doing.
And for this particular solar garden request, is it that they need a conditional use permit to have it be in place? Or what kind of permitting process are they going through?
Well, what's interesting is that the planning commission okayed to have a solar garden. However, when it came up, for the amendment came up, the majority denied any solar gardens, period.
So, it's a change to the ordinance then?
They changed the ordinance. They went against the planning commission and they deleted the solar gardens. And there's only four places in the city that could have a solar garden that's quasi-commercial. They eliminated all of them because it would have to be in a county road. It had to meet all these qualifications. But because of who owns it, Joyce Wheelander, they're going hell-bent for election. They're going to grind her into the ground any way they can. And that's what they're doing. So, this was a text amendment to allow it. And they're not even doing that. So, that's where we're going. But let's go to the next clip and we'll talk on the other side. But let's go to the next clip and we'll talk on the other side.
No, I have a question for Jennifer regarding what is commercial. I don't understand...
That's beyond the scope of what we're talking about. We're talking about a tabling motion.
They're talking about this as being commercial. We have a skating...
We're talking about a tabling motion.
Dad boy farm. We got a...
That has nothing to do with this.
Wedding barn. And we have an ordinance that you can put a supper club in 20-acre parcels. And is that commercial?
I don't know.
What is commercial?
Yeah, Mr. Cop.
Based on this, I move to table it.
I'll second it. No discussion though.
All right. Yeah. No discussion. No, there is no discussion on a tabling motion. Not on a tabling motion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 So are they concerned that it is commercial? Is that what...
That's what they're saying is commercial.
Okay. So then that... And do we know, is that what one of the points that was brought up in that letter about whether or not if it's commercial or not?
Well, here is ordinance 2014-31 that was put into place in November before I got put on the board that allows commercial things like zoning cities court of ordinance, rural event facilities. If you're located on a minimum of 20 acres and zoned A1 or A2 and you have direct access to county or state road, you can have a commercial operation. Well, solar gardens do not have traffic, they do not have people, they don't have anything. And it would have been within shrouded by, you know, trees and shrubs and there would be completely... Then there would be a... For the bees and things, you know, the...
The pollinators, yes.
The pollinators. And but because of who it is, they don't want it. And there's only four places in the city it could happen.
Right. And so the point that I was trying to make though is that talking about whether or not if it's a commercial endeavor is germane to the issue of tabling it, especially if in that five-page letter, one of the issues that's being addressed is whether or not it is or is not commercial and whether or not it does or does not fit the ordinance. I mean, that clearly would be germane to the discussion as to why you might want to table it or not. And yet, the attorney again did not list even briefly what were some of the issues that came up in this letter that have to be addressed by the city and didn't share that information with the council, who are the decision makers? Because how can you decide to do a proper extension if you don't even know what the issues of contention are that were raised in this five-page letter? And you heard the tone of his voice when he said he received, oh, a five, count them, five-page letter from this other attorney like that was some big hurrah. And he was very kind of dismissive. Don't you think in his tone of it?
Pretty much he is all the time.
And yet, this is what they're basing their argument for an extension on is this letter. And yet, in the beginning, he has a dismissive tone looking down on that letter. You see what I mean? So did it really have enough content to it to substantiate an extension?
Well, he said it, "Well, this could intimidate and say that we might be legally." Didn't say there was legal action coming forward, "But we could interpret it that way." You know? The last... We have a short clip talking about a text review and we'll talk on the other side.
Go ahead.
Based on that, staff will be issuing a letter of extension of the review period. That is a routine matter that's done in connection with text amendments all the time. It's the rare text amendment that gets evaluated within 60 days. And so that's what we're going to do unless we're otherwise instructed right now.
Yeah. No, and I'm going to actually direct the planner with the council's permission to draft that letter and send it to the applicant. The letter, again, shouldn't be discussing, but the letter was an interesting letter. I'd like to see it fully looked at by both legal and planning staff.
Okay. We're going to move on. You notice he said with council permission. Did he ever pull the council and ask permission? Absolutely not. They very rarely direct the people, any of the professionals to do anything. They come up with things, "Oh yeah, we'll do that." You know? So this mayor does not direct the city at all. He's just going with the flow and pontificating and smacking his lips and...
And it did sound, from what he was saying, it did sound like he actually had had an opportunity to read that letter. So he knows its contents and yet, it's not shared with the whole council. And that is one of the number-one rules of how to work appropriately with your council if you're a city attorney, is that you give equal information to all council members, not just the select few.
Well, you remember the letter I had you write to where he was threatening me with blackmailing me in a situation. There's no truth, everything is, how can we spin it? Kind of like Donald Trump. It isn't... There's no black and white as well. How can we spin? Well, that isn't a hole where a bomb went off. Don't you see the potential? That could be the basement for a skyscraper. So that's how that goes. Well, that's what's happening on that. You know it's coming up next in January and it's going to be voted down 5-0. You know, it's a done deal. There's going to be no discussion anymore. The meetings are going to be very short. They're never going to have an opposing view and that's the way it goes. But the next thing we're going to is they're developing that 165 acres across from the school. And they're doing a plot request. And so we're going to see that, see how that's going. It's called the Gateway and we'll talk on the other side.
Our agenda is an application for a preliminary plat and a variance request. The applicant this evening is the Excelsior Group, the owner of the property is Premier Bank.
Please.
Thank you.
Please. Let her finish.
The owner of the property is Premier Bank. The property is zoned and guided A2. The proposed plat name this evening is the Gateway. The request this evening is for a preliminary plat approval of 16 rural residential lots. And we also have in front of us a variance request from the maximum permitted length of a cul-de-sac. So we will talk about that in just a few moments. There was a duly noticed public hearing that is a requirement of not only the preliminary plat, but the variance as well. As I noted, we held the public hearing at the regular planning commission meeting which occurred in November. There was quite a bit of discussion from the respect of the planning commission, not as much from the public. There was a little bit of public testimony that was provided, primarily focused actually on trail access. There is an outlot that is proposed for a trail connection to the Gateway Trail.
So there, it's 165 acres, there's a lot of wetland. So the variance, we have the ordinance that you can only have a quarter-mile cul-de-sac. However, on the east and west side of this building, this plot has a lot of wetland. And not only that, the county has said one road going in off 12. They want to eliminate as many accesses to a county, major county road as they can. So what the variance they had to go for was kind of like a off-kilter capital T where the road goes in there about, oh, better than a quarter mile, which would be about what? 15, 1800 feet? Goes in about 2,000 feet. Then it goes to the right for one cul-de-sac and then you go a little further to the left for one cul-de-sac. And then there's a 50-foot ease, but it goes to the Gateway Trail. So everybody that has a place in there can, will have a lot, will be able to access the Gateway Trail without causing other people's property. So there, because there is so much wetland, they're having five to seven acre lots. And then there's going to be a 29-acre lot and a 19-acre or 11-acre lot wherever the wetland is because you can't do anything with it. If it's officially defined as a wetland, you're not allowed to alter that. You can't fill it in. If you put a driveway and sometimes you have to buy mitigation, you have to buy, you know, to offset it. So that's... They're real strict on that as I found about wetlands when I dug my pond. So that's what they're going for. They're very happy that this is because of... Monomita was looking at annexing it and putting in 300 homes and putting sewer and water. And what this will do is tie up the eastern or the western edge of Grant so it's be more difficult for Met Council to bring sewer and water in. You see, one of the things, the secret with the Met Council, they wanted Grant to go to 10-acre minimums because it's much easier to tear down a house on 10 acres and tear down the house next to it and then you have 20 acres. And then you put a road in and you can put in 20 houses. So that's why we used to have two-and-a-half acre lots, had planned unit developments like Woodland Acres, Victoria Station, et cetera. And we've got several of those. But Met Council got away from that because down the road, they're saying, "Hey, wait a minute. If there are five-acre lots, it's not economically feasible to develop it. But if we have 10-acre lots, it's easier to go in and make developments." And so from one standpoint, it's excellent to have this development like it is because it's going to stave it off theoretically. However, there's sewer and water across the street from Wildwood School, so it would be a small item to push her across the street at some point in time.
Right. Exactly.
And that's what they're talking about. They want to sew it up supposedly. You know, there's a double standard here. They talk out of both sides of their mouth about keeping Grant rural and they keep poking the Met Council with their commercial development. They once said there should be no leapfrog development. Well, this ordinance that I just, you know, showed you folks, 2014-31, which is voted in before we came in, allows event centers, it allows supper clubs on 20-acre parcels. So gee whiz, I could have a strip club on one of my 20 acres and put a non-skid runway. I'm kidding, obviously. I would not engage in that type of... Or a bar or anything else. I have 43 acres and I have a boarding stable and I want to keep it rural. But you realize, you're talking about two realtors that are on two-acre lots, the chair of driveway. And that has a different perspective. They have doublespeak. They've manipulated the hockey association the last... Two years ago, the last election, they actually went to the high school and talked to all the social classes, which isn't technically legal unless they're legal, there's equal representation. So there's a lot of slimy, you know, underhanded stuff going on, just like them tabling the solar garden and a number of other things, you know? And taking this guy's land with the Valley Branch. I can guarantee you, not guarantee, but I would surmise strongly that they're going to go ahead, put the guardrails in, and then be faced with a legal battle after the fact. They've been very successful in court. The Washington County turns a blind eye, as with the Hoffman decision. When he signed an order, when they wouldn't, you know, wouldn't come forward, he went through mediation, they refused to sign the mediation order, went to the judge. We had the judge have him sign the order. Then a year and a half later, they didn't do what they were supposed to do. Oh, well, they tried. I mean, how many judges roll over? Well, Washington County, and one, for example, I had to...
Well, it's very hard. I mean, when you're thinking about it, it's hard to say that a city is going to be found in contempt of a court order. And yet, if they've been ordered to do something and they don't do it, just a, you know, a... An attempt that was not in good faith and was just half-hearted, how could that actually qualify for keeping them out of contempt? Especially when it comes to something like the open meeting law rules and the statutes that all cities have to comply with. I mean, why should it apply to some and not to others?
Well, it's going to be very interesting. We're going to find out in January. There's another open meeting case going forward. And the second part of that is there were five meetings, special meetings were called and by statute, a councilman and a second councilman can request one and it has to be posted. The clerk refused to post any of them and just called, "Hey, can you guys make it?" Nope. That isn't the procedure. The procedure is to post it and if not, don't have three show up, then it doesn't happen. But they didn't follow that. Once again, they don't follow the rules numerous ways, all the way down the line, from taking someone's land to refusing, you know, ordinances. It's really amazing that, oh, this is commercial. Well, they allowed supper clubs in 20-acre portions. They passed that in 2014, a month before I got on there. Gee whiz, what's the deal about commercial? I mean, you know, a solar garden is going to have no traffic, have no impact, especially if it's, you know, surrounded by trees and it's actually providing a service. It's crazy. But anyway, well, let's go to the next one. It's... We're going to talk about lot size. We'll go through this.
Grant used to be two-and-a-half acre density lots. That's how we built Woodland Acres. That's how we built Victoria Station. It was a recommendation of Met Council that we go to 10-acre parcels. And let me give you a little history of why they made that recommendation. If you go on Manning Avenue and McCusick Road where that Gateway Trail crosses, you will see that there's about 30, 40 homes being built just south of that bridge that crosses Manning there. Met Council recommended going to 10 acres so to protect the inventory. That's why Lakeland went down to smaller parcels. We could still be at two-and-a-half acre parcels in Grant. Met Council recommended going to 10 so that we crush three or four homes and put in 40 or 50 homes. So don't believe that it was Met Council that wants us to keep 10 acres. They want to keep it for inventory. If that were the case, and we're going to say it be hostile annexation, which Mr. Huber has talked to Judge Marshall about over there...
That is incredibly incorrect. You're the one proposing commercial there. Do not lie right in front of me. I won't have it.
Well, you go back to the minutes.
Talk to the mayor, he knows he's got a...
Go back to it in April or July.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. There's going to be no discussion with the new one coming in. That is true. They're pointing that out. And the interesting thing is Larry wires sewer lift stations. And they put a sewer lift station in on Lake Elmo Avenue, south of 36, which is Lake Elmo. You go a quarter mile up, it's 36 and then Lake Elmo Avenue comes straight up and that is Grant. Well, the question I would say is why if you were putting in a sewer lift station and instead of putting in three 10 or 15 horsepower electric motors for pumping, why would you put in three 50 horsepower motors at the end of a sewer line?
Oh, because you're planning for the future.
Absolutely. You know they're planning to go straight up Lake Elmo Avenue as soon as there's a crack in the box. Of course, look what happened to Lake Elmo. They were very silly. They said, "Oh yeah, we'll take the sewer for the commercial area and that's in a radio drive where all those development, all..." It's a total... I tell you, it's got to be 200, 300 acres of shopping centers and retail, et cetera. They said, "Well, we'll take it for that." Well, they didn't read the fine print that said, "Well, wait a minute, you have to have 1,700 homes." That would be like you, Diana, going to Towesley Ford and buying a new Mustang convertible. Then at the end of the month, going back and say, "Hey, I love this Mustang, but your payments really suck. You can keep them." I mean, that's just the way it is. And, you know, I was certainly in favor of this, but... And we're going to see that in the next thing where I actually move to approve this plot because I think it's a good design.
And this is that new development that you've been talking about?
The new development across from Wildwood School. It's going to be interesting. The county says you have one access and we're going to have a divided highway there. They're going to be changing 12 significantly because it's a main thoroughfare. And so they're going to have to... And I didn't get into the details since they have to modify one of the lots to have a turnover lane. But let's play the next clip and we'll go from there. Move this plot?
I'll second the motion.
No.
Okay, go ahead. Yep, still discussing.
Okay.
Well, there you go. Because his group wants to do discussion, now we've got discussion.
Yeah.
Now, one thing that they do at the Maplewood City Council meetings and that they've done for years and years and years and it's always really, it's the wrong procedure, is that the agenda item comes up, you have the staff give their little report, and then the council members all start doing discussions without there being a motion on the floor. And technically, it's supposed to be that you have a motion first on the floor and then you have discussion. And then after all discussion is finished, then you take the vote. So that's really the way it's supposed to be framed at one of these meetings. But you'll see so oftentimes in the city of Grant, the city of Maplewood, other city municipal meetings that I watch, that it's not really actually followed.
Well, depending what you're using, are you using Robert's Rules of Order? Now, in Grant...
Or Willy Dilly rules.
Well, using Huber's Rules of Order, depending which way he's going on, you know? It's kind of interesting. One of the motions they passed, they didn't even ask for a negative, for a nay vote. "Oh, it's passed." ask for a negative, for a nay vote. Oh, it's passed. Well, wait a minute. We didn't get a chance to vote. But I didn't show that clip. I was afraid I was running out of time. It's went a little faster than I thought. I still have some time. I want to, we've got a couple more clips to Cruz Guzman. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. But let's go to the next clip, and we'll talk on the other side. The supper clubs in 20 acres, and they're not commercial in A2?
They've been allowed since 1982.
Lauren, if you- No, it was just passed. It was just passed recently, within the last five years.
Okay, we're going to move on.
With a supper club in 20 acres, if you're at a county rule.
If you just-
Now, he said since 1982. Did you hear that?
I did.
Well, excuse me. I have the ordinance right here, folks. He's a pathological liar. City of Grant, Washington County, ordinance 2014-31, 2014, establishing section 32-352, chapter 32, zoning regarding rural event facilities. And that's what they put, the hockey arena on, the wedding barn. And the only reason we don't have a supper club at Highway 96 in Manning in the northwest, northeast quadrant, or northwest quadrant there, because the man sold his bar, went in for a small business administration loan. But let me back up. He came in initially saying he wanted a little neighborhood restaurant with a volleyball net and a softball thing. And they said, okay, go ahead. Well, when he came back in, his proposal included two 5,000-square-foot buildings, a restaurant in a convention center with a patio in between. Well, for that, for 10,000 square feet, his 20 acres, it was half wetland. There's no way in the world you could have put a sewer system large enough to accommodate it. But very conveniently, imagine that, on the Stillwater side of the road was sewer and water. Imagine that. And that was the next trip that those guys were going to get, to get sewer and water into Grant, and playing dumb, and doing it under the, under the wire, so to speak. And they're doing this stuff all the time, like the solar gardens, like the supper clubs, the rural event centers. And again, it was not supposed to be leapfrog development. The potential hockey arena that they said, hey, take back your CUP and just build what you want to build. You've got 53 acres. Hockey arenas aren't rural. Excuse me, indoor riding arenas for horses are a rural function. So they let the guy put 100-by-300-foot building up for a hockey arena? And I don't know what's happening. It's just kind of sitting there right now. But that was in the extreme northwest corner of Grant. And the Met Council said they did not want to see leapfrog development.
And typically, that's why, you know, one of the goals when you do your comprehensive planning is that you do your land use designations, that zoning, and have it so that it is consistent, so that you have your commercial along your transportation corridors, that you have buffers between residential and commercial areas, that you don't have what you're calling leapfrog development, where you have commercial just inter-dispersed wherever, because that's not an orderly way of development in a community. And so, I mean, that's a very well-established principle that certainly anybody who's gone to planning school has read a couple chapters about.
Well, Larry and I have both attended law seminars and planning seminars when we were elected. These other clowns haven't. They don't know up from down. But what I'm going to shift gears to now is something brand-new. It's called the Civic Caucus. It's the Minnesota Education Policy Interview. Dan Shulman speaks about the Cruz Guzman versus State of Minnesota class action desegregation lawsuit, which he filed in 2015. The plaintiffs argue that the segregated schools did not provide an adequate education, and he says in an earlier lawsuit, determined the Minnesota State Constitution requires. He believes the legislature must provide a metro-wide desegregation plan to remedy the state's failure to provide an adequate education. And this interview took place on October 12. Now, he's got a, he's got a resume that's unbelievable. You know, Minnesota best leaders, North Star lawyers. He's admitted to the Minnesota State and federal courts, the Supreme Court, the Tax Court, the Court of Appeals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And so if our viewers want to look up a little more information on him, what was his name again?
His name is Dan Shulman, and that is S-H-U-L-M-A-N, okay? And he attended Harvard Law School. He graduated cum laude in 1970. And one of the things they're talking about is, it's a class action lawsuit that plans to desegregate Twin Cities schools. The plaintiffs in the law school argue the suit has enabled racial segregation in Minneapolis and St. Paul by allowing racially imbalanced enrollment in district-operated schools. It's yet unclear what specific allegations remain against the charters. The plaintiffs claim racially imbalanced schools are not providing an adequate education for students. And as you know, the achievement gap between white and colored students is significant. Minnesota Constitution Article 8, Section 1 says, "The stability of a republican form of government, depending mainly upon the intelligence of the people, it is the duty of the legislature to establish a general and uniform system of public schools. The legislature shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise will secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state," unquote. You know, while there's no specific constitutional requirement for an adequate education scheme versus the state in the case of education funding, was decided in '93 and declared that students have a fundamental right to an adequate education. Okay, the Court of Appeals panel dismissed the Hampton County Cruz versus Guzman versus State of Minnesota in March 2017. But on July 25, 2018, the Minnesota Supreme Court reversed the Court of Appeals ruling and set an a forward to decision that the lawsuit should move forward. So that's where it's sitting, and they're talking about-
And I could see, Mr. Seers, where that could have significant impacts on a lot of different school districts here in the Twin Cities area. Because not only would it impact, like, say, for instance, St. Paul's school district, but even, like, say, for instance, Monomeda's school district, wouldn't it?
Well, one of the things, the issues here, is they're talking about the white flight. And what that is, is students will be shipped out to Monomeda or the other more elite schools so they get a better education. And whatever is left is left in the cities. And when I was in education, it was the lowest common denominator. You fill up a classroom, you can put one or two special education students in a classroom, and it functions, you know, because they have to come up to the level of the other 25 students. You put in five, and all hell breaks loose, because there's enough of a corps that they bring the other 20 down to their level.
Right. And the teachers, of course, have to focus more of their time on those students because of their demands. And so it's hard to then deal with everybody, because not, you can't have three different study plans going on at one time.
I taught, worked with Bud Grant's daughter, and she quit in the middle of the year, because they would put six or seven special ed kids in a biology class, and it was pandemonium.
Right.
But I see we're getting down to it. This Cruz Guzman, it's C-R-U-Z-G-U-Z-M-A-N versus the State of Minnesota. It's something that's, watch, it's supposed to actually come to court in exactly one year. But I think Keith Ellison could, with having a new attorney general, the old attorney general, Laurie Swanson, wasn't interested in signing on. But I think Keith Ellison is going to be more prone to going along with this and supporting it. So that's something else to watch in the future. And we'll see what happens when I'm no longer a councilman. We're going to have to dig hard to get information on the next one, because there's going to be no discussion.
And so that must mean that even though you're not on the council, you're still doing the show.
Oh, absolutely.
Excellent. Well, I hope you invite me back.
Oh, absolutely. We're going to continue doing it, and we're going to get it out to the people. You know, one of the things, people, when they moved into Grant, say, hey, I don't know what apathy is, and I don't give a damn. So, hey, see you next time.